Board of Education Meeting to Order. First, I'd like the approval of the agenda. Is John, could you do that, please?
Sure.
That the agenda of Monday, May 13th, 2013, Board of Education meeting be approved is set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Director Witt.
Aye.
Director Lewis.
Aye.
Director Anhalt.
Aye.
Director Rosenthal.
Aye.
Director Worthy.
Aye.
Vice President Humbles.
Aye.
Next is our recognition. Jill, if you could come forward, please.
Thank you. It's my privilege to be here tonight. The Cedar Rapids Community School District and the Foundation are proud to honor employees for their 25, 30, 35, and 40 years of continuous service in this district. The Board and the Foundation appreciate immensely the efforts of our employees, especially those who have contributed so many years and affected so many students. Some of the recipients who have achieved these milestones are present this evening to accept their awards. All of the recipients' names will be read, but not everyone is here tonight, but we will read their names, so.
Would you like us to come down?
The first recipient, okay.
We're gonna come down.
The Board's gonna come down.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If we could hold our applause for these employees till the end, and I will read each of their names. First tonight is Denise Alger from Taylor Elementary School. Marlis Bitterman, here at the ELS in our Benefits Department. Carrie Ash from Wilson, she's not here tonight. Also, Karen Bonzer from Hoover Elementary, not here tonight. Randy Cooper, the District Warehouse. Lynn Davis, Grant Elementary. James Dostal, Jefferson High School. Dawn Drake, Transportation. Karen Fritz, Wilson. Amy Hannish, Coolidge Elementary. Kim Hazlitt from the ELSC. Donna Hoagland, Kennedy High School. Mary Johnson, Nixon Elementary. Teresa Keely, Metro. Cindy Lampier, Transportation. Next, Karen Lisa Camp from the ELS. Cheryl Lindo, Kennedy High School. Helen McConnell, Grant Wood. Julie Messenger, Taylor Elementary. Patricia Moat, ELSC. John Pelacheck, Erskine Elementary. Karen Pink, Grant Wood. Janice Willett, Grant Elementary. Natalie Rosten, Washington High School. Melissa Summers, Johnson Elementary. Lori Tonsvelt, Taft Middle School. Susan Van Ward. Mark Wildin, Kennedy High School. And those are 25-year employees.[327.22][327.22](APPLAUSE). Next, I'll be announcing our employees with 30 years of service, beginning with Joseph Benedict, Kennedy High School. Margaret Crosby, Washington High School. Donald Dawes, Metro. Teresa Dirtina, Johnson Elementary. Cecilia Jamison, Transportation. Timothy Catmire, Kennedy High School. Terri Chemmy, Metro. Jean Shinsehn, Erskine Elementary. Michael Schneekloth, Roosevelt Middle School. Victoria Seaton, Metro. And Steve Wallace from Metro. These are our 30-years-of-service employees.[397.31][397.31](APPLAUSE). Next, our employees with 35 years of service, beginning with Nancy Kaufman, ELSC. Robert Hughes, Carpenter Paint Shop. Lynn Patterson, Jefferson High School. Janet Perkins, Kennedy High School. Jacqueline Reese Franklin Middle School. Jeffrey Rawway, ESC NX. Charles Stallman, District Warehouse. Susan Wilkie, Van Buren Elementary School. And those are our employees with 35 years of service.[450.03][450.03](APPLAUSE). We have one employee who is not here tonight, who actually attained 40 years of service. May I hear it for Rebecca Sheets from Harding Middle School?[470.19][470.19](APPLAUSE). Thank you again for your service, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Benson.
Would the board just stay there? Good evening, everybody. This is one of my favorite meetings of the year, in which I get to say thank you to the Board in behalf of all of the Executive Council, who have several members here. The Iowa Association of School Boards hosts a Board Recognition meeting every year. Okay. As the video indicated, the topic or program this year is built around the theme of building brighter futures. Certainly, our Board of Education, if you follow us, you know that we spend a lot of time about students at our Board meetings, and we talk about our instructional program, our curriculum, and the work that our students do every year. So it's my privilege, on behalf of our Executive Council, to congratulate the 2,100 school Board members across the state who give invaluable public service, and congratulate our Board of Education here assembled today for their service. And I would like the Executive Council to join me in congratulating the Board. As the last few people go through, I would like to invite the audience to join me in giving our Board of Education recognition.
Our next order of business is Communications, Delegations, and Petitions. And I have some green slips for folks that would like to come before the Board. I will call your name and invite you up, and if you could give your name, address, and limit it, limit your comments to three minutes, please. The first person is Lawrence Winkowsky.
Lawrence Winkowsky, 4234 Morrell Road, Northeast. I just had a couple of things. And this first one might be a user error here, but being in here at the ESC with the Wi-Fi capabilities, I'd like to think that we'd be able to have access to it when we're in Board meetings, so we could look up the minutes or agenda and stuff like that. So if that isn't available, I'd like to make a suggestion that it become available, and that. Another thing was a couple weeks ago, where I asked somebody to contact me about videos that are played in our classrooms, and no one ever did, so I'd appreciate if someone could contact me so I can talk about it. Third thing was, and I didn't know who to talk to about this, I mentioned it casually to a few people, it has to do with our phone system. If you're calling into the ESC from the outside, it is very frustrating to work through our phone system. If no one's at the front desk, and you don't know the person you're looking for, you don't have the options that says, if you'd like a particular, know that your department, select one, and then you start giving off listed departments, and that, so you could at least get to the correct department. If somebody is calling with a complaint, and by the time they actually get to the person they want to talk to, they can be extremely, additionally frustrated from using our phone system. For such a new building, our phone system is, seems lacking technology, is a good way of putting it, and that I'd like to, you know, see more additional options where you can't, don't have the option of departments, dial by number, and then if you don't get what you want, then go to an operator, but I'd like to see some improvements made to it, and that. So, all right, well, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Susan Clapp.
Good evening. Susan Clapp, 2242 Evergreen Street, Northeast. Thank you, Vice President Humbles. It's my pleasure this evening to share with the Board about a special award recently presented at the CREA reception for Lynn County Educator of the Year. In a word, Dr. Sandra Stevens is incredible. Her commitment to improving public education for the past 42 years earned Dr. Stevens the Cedar Rapids Education Association Friend of Education Award for 2013. Dr. Stevens truly understands education. Raised in a family that values education, Dr. Stevens graduated from Washington High School, taught science there, and finally served the Cedar Rapids Community School District in administration. As a result, she has the knowledge and experience necessary to consider the whole child when making decisions at the building and district levels, or advocating with stakeholders at the state level. Dr. Stevens is the only district administration to achieve this award, and at times, she and the union have sat on different sides of an issue. But regardless of the topic, Dr. Stevens has consistently made statements and decisions that demonstrate what's best for kids. Her professionalism and respect for others is unmatched. You know someone who's a real friend of education when they're honest, tell you what you need to know, and continually have your best interests at heart. No one is a greater advocate for staff and students than Dr. Stevens. She will be greatly missed as she begins her retirement at the end of June. It's an honor and privilege to have worked so closely with her to improve education throughout the Cedar Rapids Community School District. Congratulations to a true friend of education, Dr. Sandy Stevens.[1075.24][1075.24](APPLAUSE).
Next request comes from Colleen Kempz.
Good evening. My name's Colleen Kempz, 4215 Orchard Drive, Northwest. And I am currently a resource, packed resource specialist for the district, but I have been and always will remain a school librarian at heart for over 40 years. And I'd like to ask the members of the Board and district staff and visitors to take a little bit of a trip down memory lane with me. When I first came to the district in the mid-'70s, Cedar Rapids Public Schools had just won the National Encyclopedia Britannica School Library Program of the Year Award, recognized as being one of the very top programs in the States. During the 1970s and '90s, the Cedar Rapids District was the personification, no, I think the epitome of the school library program that was working. We used the reward money, or the award money from the Encyclopedia Britannica Award to fund Books Have It, So Do We, 25 years of bringing the best children's authors and illustrators to our district. However, lately, things have taken a downward turn. Despite a comprehensive survey in 2002 that showed that, by Dr. Marcia Rodney and Keith Curry-Lance, there was a conclusive correlation between academic achievement and the existence of properly-staffed school libraries. We've had budget and personnel cuts, and they have limited the time that media specialists have been able to work with children. Things have continually worsened, more staffing and more funding cuts are again being threatened. And I'm here to ask you to please reconsider some of the cuts that have been proposed. Budgets for new materials have become smaller or non-existent. Some fortunate schools have vigorous support from their BTOs, and they can afford to buy new materials, but many buildings do not have this. This leads to inequity of access to materials and inequity of access to staff. Our district is losing students to surrounding schools who can provide better access to the wealth of learning materials. Others after me are going to speak of the multitude of tasks required of media specialists and the constant demands on their times. Without proper funding and support personnel, our library program is in danger of becoming nonexistent. The goal of excellence for all will just be empty words on a fancy logo. Perhaps we could at least just try for equity. Thank you.
The next person, I believe, is, is it Edie Chase?
Yes. My name is Edie Chase, 354 Rockford Road, Southwest. Members of the School Board, district staff, and visitors, I am a Media Secretary for the Cedar Rapids School District, serving Roosevelt Middle School. I recently was informed that my position will be eliminated next year. I'm speaking on behalf of the media, of the middle school community, when I am saying that cutting the middle school media secretaries is a bad idea and will not build a better future for our students. Without media secretaries, students will not be able to use the library or its resources as freely as they can now. As teacher librarians are left to run the library alone and support technology around the building, librarians will be forced to close our libraries while they address other issues. Without media secretaries, teacher librarians will not be immediately available to take care of technology problems in the buildings. Teacher librarians' support of the district's many technologies has become an important task in keeping our classrooms running smoothly. Without media secretaries, teachers will not be able to receive the services they are getting today, as teacher librarians will not be free to leave the libraries as they are today. Both teachers and students will suffer with the loss of quality services when teacher librarians are not available to work with them. I am speaking on behalf of the district's teacher librarians and media secretaries when I make this statement. The elimination of media secretaries from the middle schools will create a gap of services and skills in every middle school in our district. This loss will be felt greatly, not only by our middle schools, but also as students, but also as they enter high school and are expected to be more independent. All of this could be avoided by allowing the middle school media secretaries to remain in their jobs. In closing, I think of one particular student who stops to see me several times a week. I'm that safe person for that student, and next year, I'll be gone. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathy, is it Goddiken?
My name is Kathy Goddiken, 1117 Moose Drive, Northwest. Members of the Board, district staff, and visitors, I'm a teacher librarian for the Cedar Rapids Community School District, serving both Grant and Cleveland Elementary Schools, and I'm here, I'm here to speak on behalf of the libraries. Recently, we were told that district funding for school libraries to purchase books has been eliminated for the 2013 through 2014 school year. As a teacher librarian and parent of a young child attending school in the district, this reduction in funds for library books highly concerns me. The schools, the school library is many students' only access to books. As of today, we've checked out over 25,000 books this year at Cleveland School Library. Currently, 62% of students at Cleveland Elementary and 68% of students at Grant Elementary receive free and reduced lunch. The majority of low-income students do not own many books. The vast majority of students are not taken to the public library to check out books. When I asked three first and second grade classes at Cleveland today if they'd ever been to the public library, only four to five students raised their hands in each class. Cuts in district funding to libraries and cuts to building budgets drastically reduces the number of new books that can be purchased for school libraries. This year, this is an example, this year, Cleveland's library budget of $4,000, with $1,000 coming from the district and $3,000 coming from the building budget, of that $4,000 that purchases 200 books at the average cost of $20 per book. Next year, Cleveland's library budget will be only $1,600, which will only purchase 80 new books, and that is 120 fewer new books than we purchased this year. And that's due to the cuts from, from the district budget, as well as the 10% cuts to the building budget, leaving principals with less funds to give to the libraries for books. Along with purchasing new books, libraries often must replace books that have been lost, damaged, or worn out. Both of my schools have high mobility rates, and we lose many books each year when students move. The proposed cut eliminates the single source of funding for some libraries, especially at the elementary level. Some elementary libraries will have $0 to purchase new books next year. Leaving library budgets to principals' discretion creates inequality among the collections in the school libraries. Finally, as a mother, I'm concerned with the cuts to funding for our school libraries. I wonder if my son, who will be starting kindergarten next fall, will ever feel the excitement of checking out brand-new library books at his school library.
Excuse me, Mrs. Goddiken, your time is up.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy. Our next presenter will be Becky Johnson.
Hi, I'm Becky Johnson, 3210 75th Street, Norway. I'm the district's lead librarian and a teacher librarian at Jefferson High School. Dear members of the Board and others here today, I come to you advocating for our district's school library program, which is facing more cuts next year. I feel that speakers before me have made some excellent points about the services that strong school libraries can and should provide to students, staff, and the entire community. As Colleen already stated, research shows a direct connection between student achievement and a properly-staffed library. Research has shown this not only in Iowa, but all over the country. Kathy talked about the impact of reduced book budgets on schools. Edie shared how middle schools have, these cuts to middle schools have touched her deeply, or will touch, touch middle schools next year. I realize that cuts are taking place in all areas statewide, but with each cut, we as teacher librarians are less able to utilize our expertise in the areas of literacy, technology, and the Iowa core. The sharing of teacher librarians among elementary buildings was the first step backwards in this area. While I realize the Board is faced with serious budget cuts, I ask that the Board rethink this round of library cuts. As I stated in an email that I sent to you earlier last week, I look forward to an opportunity to share with the Board our district library media program, including our information, literacy, and online safety curriculum. As one of our district's newest teacher librarians, Stacy Novak shared with me recently, the fact is that our job is to provide services to teachers and students. It was driven home in library school then, and it was when I was back in school. How can we do this without adequate staffing and funding? Thank you for your attention.
The next order of business is our superintendent's report.
Thank you. This morning, I had an opportunity-
This morning, I had an opportunity to join the walking school bus program that's being piloted this month at Erskine, Garfield, Jackson, and Van Buren Elementary Schools. A walking school bus is a group of children walking to school together under the supervision of adult drivers, or in this case, walkers. The pilot has been coordinated with the Blue Zones Project in Cedar Rapids. It's a great opportunity for children to increase daily physical activities while focusing on the importance of safety. And it was a real treat to be there today at Erskine. Second item, Kennedy, Washington, and Jefferson High Schools were all named to the Newsweek 2013 List of America's Best High Schools. The ranking highlights the best public schools in the nation, those who have proven to be the most effective in turning out college-ready graduates. The list is based on graduation rate, college acceptance rates, average ACT and/or SAT scores, AP enrollment, AP tests taken, and the scores obtained by the students. Congratulations to the Cougars, Warriors, and Jayhawks for a great performance this last year to earn this honor. Our special services department has been honored by the Grant Wood Area Education Agency with the Educational Partner Award. The award recognizes exemplary educational leadership for children, youth, and schools in the Grant Wood service area. Next, the district is seeking new members for our audit committee. Volunteers will serve a three-year term on the audit committee, beginning July 1 of 2013 and ending June 30 of 2016. The audit committee meets six times a year. It is preferred that members have some business experience, an understanding of governmental, financial, accounting, and auditing, although such experience is not a requirement. Interested individuals can call the Business Service Office by June 1 to apply. And our district Executive Director for Business Services, Steve Graham, manages the audit committee and the reporting processes. The district and shivehattery architects and engineers have been recognized with an honor award in Building and Systems Award from the American Council of Engineering Companies of Iowa. The honor is designated for the construction of the ELS facility and is in recognition for the facility's design with multiple uses in mind, the geothermal heating and cooling, and other sustainable strategies. I had the privilege of representing the district a week ago Thursday at a presentation in Des Moines where the award was presented. So congratulations to everyone who had a part of the design and implementation of the new education leadership and support center. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Board reports, do we have any board reports?
Yeah, there were several staff, teachers, administrators, and Gary Ann Halt and myself that visited four schools in Chicago on Monday and Tuesday last week. We had a great trip, and we went to two different high schools. One of them was Gary Comer College Prep School. We visited an elementary school, Namaste Charter School, which had a real focus on wellness and active engagement of students. We visited a selective enrollment school, the Walter Payton College Prep School, and we visited a pre-K through eighth international baccalaureate school, Smith Magnet School. So we had some great insights about some of the things that are comparative to our school district. We saw some things, I think, that they were doing very well and innovative that we might gain from, and I think as a group, at some point, we'll probably have a, a time to report out to everyone on, on those visits. So I don't know if anybody else has anything to add, but I really enjoyed it. We had a great time and met a lot of great staff. We spent, they spent half a day with, at each school with us, so it was very good.
Alan, do you have anything to report?
Legislature continues their process, and I don't know what it is. I want to be careful of how I call it, but it is, there was movement today, but how much movement, I cannot say.
That runs.
I think it's important for the public to know that a lot of us continue to push the legislature, our local legislators, and the folks in those chair positions, the governor's office, and I know Alan's been on it quite a bit, but many of us, I think, continue to push them and...
You're not doing a very good job.
No.
Thank you.
Any other reports? Gary?
I, besides going to Chicago, and I think John did a good job of summing up the trip, I thought we saw four unique schools and four different, somewhat different approaches. And I think the team is going to debrief next month and a little further comments on it. But I also had the chance to, the opportunity to do a National School Board Technology Site Visit in Vancouver, Washington in the last two weeks. The district senate team of Lori Brussek, Holly Palmerschine, Carla Reese, Vicky Genkinger, and myself. First of all, I want to thank the National School Board Association and Steve Webb, the superintendent of Vancouver Schools, and Kathy Gillespie, the school president, for being great hosts and putting together a very valuable and well-orchestrated visit. I think we all walked away with, with some very good information, and it was an excellent visit. The major themes and concepts that I observed and walked away with were, first of all, we saw a variety of more program options and programs of choice there. They had a variety of programs and opportunities. It certainly wasn't one-size-fits-all. The district is about 22,000 students, 35% minority population, certainly a good percentage of free and reduced lunch, so it was a diverse community. They used a variety of technologies. They saw iPads, iPods, iPads, laptops, Macs being used. There were some one-to-one programs, there were some using bring-your-own technology. A variety of software. We saw Canvas, which we are going to be rolling out next year. That was one of their systems of choice. OneNote, Google's Doc, Photoshop, again, a variety of also softwares, particular to the type of technology that we're using and the program. I think one of the key things that I, that I walked away with was that along with the technology, an crucial part was the professional development in implementing the two new technologies. It wasn't just putting iPads or iPods or laptops into a school, along with it went, went a transformation of how they were teaching. So the technology went hand-in-hand with, with the professional development and different concepts of, of reaching children. Saw learning, project-based learning, some collaborations, and we saw some international baccalaureate curriculum being used at the middle school. I observed very powerful 21st century learning taking place, using the technologies and the appropriate teaching tech, strategies, so I think they went hand-in-hand. One of the keynote, or the keynote speaker was Mark Edwards, superintendent of Mooresville Gradeed School District in North Carolina, the author of Every Child, Every Day. Did an excellent job. It's an excellent book. I would suggest that could be a possible book study, relatively easy read, but very powerful. I want to read just a quote from the book as I started reading it. This is a student feedback from a Mooresville High School student. "I constantly hear how today's students need a 21st century education. My thoughts: We are 12 years into the 21st century. Perhaps it's time to stop talking about it and do what's right. I'm glad our district had the courage and insight to understand that while it wouldn't be easy to implement such changes, it was the right thing to do for us." Mooresville High School student. And I just would conclude that I think we are very poised to the next step in technology. We've done a very good job of building an infrastructure with the fiber optics, with our computer labs, with our, our Power School, some of our software, and now Canvas being rolled out, and broadband. I think we're ready to now move into, let's say, Phase Two, which, how do we get more technology into, directly into the hands of the students? And again, there will be a follow-up of that, that group along with this Chicago group next month to maybe carve some, some direction.
Dr. Benson?
Just one additional thing, we are taking that suggestion as a superintendent's cabinet. We're going to do a book study on Mark Edwards' book, and we have ordered those for all of the board members, so you should expect to receive that and have the opportunity to read that.
Thank you. I would also like to share, I attended the 20th anniversary at the African-American Museum and awarded three scholarships. Three scholarships were awarded. The scholarship was established by Mr. and Mrs. Hood, which are sitting in the audience, in honor of his sister, Willella Fleellen, and that was the name of the scholarship. Three students from Washington High School received $1,000 scholarship. The students are Jeffrey Chambers, Amira Nash, and Michaela Kellner. This is the second year that these have been awarded, so we thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Hood, for providing that support. We'll move to the consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone would like to pull prior to our roll call?
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Hal?
Aye.
Freddie?
Aye.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
Director Witt?
Aye.
Vice President Humbles?
Aye. Moving on to leadership and, learning and leadership, we have a presentation by Sandy, Dr. Stevens, on homeschool, the homeschool assistance program.
Just as an introduction, this is something the Board of Education had asked for earlier in the year when homeschool was being discussed in relationship to our survey around open enrollment, and you wanted to hear and understand more of our programming, so Dr. Stevens has arranged for this presentation.
Thank you. Vice President Humbles, Dr. Benson, members of the board with me this evening, there they are, are our lead teachers from our homeschool assistance program, Deanna Anji and Anne Suggs, if you want to stand up and probably come up. And we also have a parent in our program, not attending our homeschool, but whose children are attending our homeschool, Sherry Demassal, and Rebecca Hogland, who is a former student of the homeschool assistance program. So they're going to share some of their insights with you about our homeschool assistance program. As you know, in Iowa, families who choose to educate their own children may do so under competent private instruction requirements of the Iowa Code. The homeschool assistance program may be offered by accredited public school districts to support the efforts of the competent private instruction families. We must employ properly licensed teachers. We have a ratio that is required by code that teachers serve 40 students or 20 families, and the instructor has to have contact with the child at least four times per quarter, and they're going to share with you how they do that. They provide supports to parents and families about lesson plans, instructional materials, teaching strategies, evaluation of student learning, and planning for instruction. We're also required to provide materials to homeschooled families on the same basis as we would provide them to children enrolled in our district, and for that, we receive funding equivalent to 3/10ths of the funding for individual students in this district to support the homeschool assistance program. In addition, they may dual-enroll in our district for activities or services or extracurricular programs, and when they do that, we receive additional funding for dual enrollment. They may also receive special education services if they have an IEP, and also the services of the AEA to support that IEP. And they could enroll for the purpose of testing or for post-secondary enrollment options, and they'll be sharing with you some of the things that they've benefited from that include some of the options I just described. This is the mission of our homeschool assistance program, and it's providing an alternative to families and supporting them. And then, when you look at the kinds of supports that are available, these are the things that we've just kind of basically alluded to, and they'll talk more about the details of these, about the kinds of meetings that they have, the resources they provide, the additional programming that is available to these families, and of course, the dual-enrollment option. There are a lot of things that are done to support this mission. We've mentioned some of them, they'll go into more detail with that. We do have a lending library. We're functioning out of Wilson Middle School this year. Previously, we were at Wright Elementary. Additional programming for families includes enrichment classes through the homeschool assistance program, field trips, learning fairs, and they'll talk more about that, and of course, the assessment option. And we have graduates of our homeschool assistance program, and their graduation is coming up next week also. And those students meet the requirement of the Iowa Code for graduation and get a lot of our coursework either through dual enrollment or through online courses. So I will turn this over to the homeschool staff, and they can take you to their webpage, which gives you a lot of information about the program.
Thank you, Sandy. We're very happy to be here. We're glad that you invited us because we like to share about our program, and we're going to just kind of walk through the website. I'm Anne Suggs, by the way, one of the lead teachers for the homeschool program. And it seems that all of a sudden, I'm the senior member. I don't know how that happened. But we are going to just kind of walk you through our website, which we would invite you to visit when you have some time and want to delve a little more deeply. We'll try to keep it succinct. So I'm going to let Deanna start with About Us.
This, of course, is the homepage, and that, we just try to highlight different things that are going on, the activities that, that are pertinent at that time. Then when we go to the About Us tab, we wanted to meet our staff. We have seven staff members on board with us right now, and we have taken a lot of pride in our staff. We have a wide variety of educational backgrounds and certifications. Part of us are certified special education, part of us have a gifted and talented certification. Many of us have our master's degrees. We have an art teacher on staff. We have high school certified teachers on staff. So what we try to do is build a staff that can meet the needs of kindergarten through 12th grade. It's a big thing to be able to, all the educational areas plus the different ages. So that's the other things there you can look into, but we wanted to highlight our staff.
One of the things that we provide for our students is that K through 12 have the option of coming in to Wilson School one day a week and taking classes that we provide, so that it's an opportunity for them to work with other students, and sometimes these kids are working in a classroom of one or two at home, and so it's a very good opportunity for them to come in and have a real classroom kind of environment. And believe it or not, homeschool kids love to eat lunch at school.
And believe it or not, homeschool kids love to eat lunch at school, so they're thrilled to be able to get lunch in recess, which is good. Our elementary classes meet two days, and the students can choose one day. Currently, we're doing it on Mondays and Tuesdays. The students come in and rotate through art, music, PE, history, and science, and lunch and recess are in there also somewhere. And so we have probably about 40 kids per day.
Forty, fifty?
Forty to 50 students each day that come in, and we run them through that rotation. That's all taught by our staff. We also have middle school classes one day a week, and the kids rotate through art, excuse me, science, music, history, and PE and music kind of switch back and forth. And they also eat lunch at Wilson Middle School. So the high school kids come in one afternoon a week, and this year, they have had art and a literature-writing kind of component that they have done. Our goals with these classes, obviously, since the students are only there one day per week, is not any kind of major comprehensive education, but to sort of light fires and sparks and to get them interested in some things that they might not be doing at home, and also to give them an opportunity to be with each other. And so the classes are very popular. We really enjoy our classes, and the kids seem to really enjoy being there, so it's a very good combination. Okay.
The next tab that we have is the Activities tab. Go ahead. This is just Changes Monthly, and what this page does is just kind of tell you what's going to be available this month. So this month, you'll notice there are field trips. Tomorrow, we have a prospective parent meeting where we'll be meeting with parents who are thinking about homeschooling next year. We have a group of about 30 different families coming in, so we are growing. We're very excited about it. So, and then you'll see the difference. There's Defense Class, The Wizard of Oz. One of the things that we try to do is we do get involved in what are called the District Field Trips. So we will be going with the other fifth graders. The fifth graders who wanted to sign up will be going with the other fifth graders in the district to see Matinee of the Wizard of Oz. Then you just see we have different spring picnic and adventure land type of things. But each month, these change. We many times have parent trainings. We have learning fairs. We just, we always kind of joke with our families, if you did everything we offered, they'd have no time to teach. But we are working with such a wide variety of parents. That's why we have such a wide variety of activities, so we can meet the needs of, you know, almost 300 students and in various, having various activities. The way that we communicate that is through, so we'll go to the Communication tab, we have a monthly newsletter that goes out electronically. On this tab, you can see the newsletters for the year, and so families, they, this is sent to them electronically, but then again, if they want to go back and look at something or they have deleted it, they can go through. So you're welcome to look at that page too, and just see some of the things that we have offered. So Anne, give you a first.
This is kind of like being at a dance here. Okay, we're going to go to program information. One of the primary responsibilities that we have is home visits, and one of the things, we are by law mandated to have a certain number of contacts with our families, and one of the ways that we meet that requirement is by doing home visits. And what we really love to do, home visits are kind of our favorite things, and it is, you learn a lot about kids and families when you're sitting around the kitchen table with them doing an education activity. And we have a room just completely full of what we call our kits, that are educational activities that we take out in the field to the families, and sometimes, it's kind of like a one-room schoolhouse, where we might have multiple age levels in the room at the same time. And so home visits are an important part of what we do. They aren't always in the homes. We sometimes meet families at school, or sometimes, we meet families. I actually have a family that is from Kiasakwa, Iowa, which if you know, is in the very tip of Iowa, and I meet them about halfway, so that we don't have to rack up the mileage. The other thing on that program info, what else was on there? Oh, learning fairs. We have learning fairs, where the kids are able to showcase the kinds of things that they are doing. And so it's a really fun opportunity for them to come in and get a little recognition and be able to share the kinds of things that they have been doing in their studies. So those are, one of our favorite ones that we do every year is a World Food Fest, which does involve food, and so it's very popular, and the students learn about a country and bring a beautiful exhibit that they have put together, and fix noshes, noshy things for everybody to eat from the country, representative recipes, and it's just one of our best things that we do. It's very fun. We do have, we do have a relationship with the Workplace Learning Connection, which we have, we have our Workplace Learning Connection poster girl is here. She is prominently featured in their latest video that they produced and has been a really great participant in those programs, the internships and job shadows. So if you are interested in our high school FAQs, click in.
Okay, then our next tab there, and you keep taking my.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Our next tab there is the tab just about Power School. Since we do have so many families that are dual-enrolled, we have that on our website, just like every other school in the district does, so families can easily access their children's grades from their dual-enrolled classes. We won't go into that much. The next tab is PAT, and that stands for Parent and Teachers Together. It's like a PTA group. We, they have recently formed this group about three years ago, and what they do, they function much like a PTA. They support us by fundraising, organizing lots of activities for our families. They do like a sledding party, a swimming party. They organize things that would help families get together and get to know each other, which is really valuable, because you can learn a lot from other homeschooling families. We learn a lot when we go on our visits, because families, moms have great teachers and teach us a lot, too. And we do have, Sheri Damaso is our PAT president. She's been in our program for some time, so we're very proud of that organization, and they have been a wonderful support to us.
Can we have Sheri talk there?
Okay.
So I'm Sheri Damaso. I have been homeschooling my two children for eight years now. Their whole educational experience to this point has been homeschooling. Most homeschoolers, if you talk to us for very long, you'll find out are passionate about our children's education, even more so than the average parent in the district. And if you think about it, can you be more involved in your parent, in your children's education than researching and choosing the curriculum that you think will best meet their needs, teaching those daily lessons, and evaluating their performance? We cover all the gamuts. In fact, sometimes with, in my role as president of PAT, we have a little bit of a difficulty getting some of the parents to help us and join in what we're doing, because they say, can I be more involved in my child's education than I already am? And in those cases, we encourage them by how by banding together, we can be stronger than any one of our homeschool programs, any one of our schools taking place at home by working together. We're fortunate in Iowa, in addition to this passion, to have a lot of options. You can homeschool independently here in Iowa, or we have the option, which is unique to our state, of being able to be part of an HSAP through a public district. In this area, we even have three, and so with open enrollment, there are lots of choices. And so it's very competitive to decide in a very personalized decision of what option is going to work best for my children. Personally, I chose the Cedar Rapids HSAP in part because of the program structure. When I was going from having preschoolers into school-aged children, I looked at the way the program is set up and thought, wow, one block each week, a time period where I can take my children to school and they will be there, was wonderful for me, both to have some free time, but more importantly, that allowed us to have four other days of the week that we could focus on our academic learning at home without, oh, it's time to leave for class in 10 minutes and have an hour here and an hour there. I really liked that block scheduling and that I knew my schedule for the whole year, and that wasn't going to change. As the teachers have described, I really see the HSAP classes as offering the best of both worlds. They do have the opportunity for that large group experience and learning about some subjects I'm not very good at, like art and phys ed. We would be in trouble if I, they only depended on me for that. But at the same time, they're getting individualized instruction that's tailored to their specific needs and challenges as students. They have social opportunities, lockers, lunch, recess, those things that if they dual-enroll or if we would enroll them in school full-time later on in public school, they're going, it's going to be to their advantage to understand how those things work and be experienced with them. As we got more involved in the program, I also have grown to appreciate the field trips, the assessments, the learning fairs. For us, one of the things I like about the learning fairs is it gives the children opportunities to make public presentations. With a class of two, we don't spend a whole lot of time doing oral reports, so this is a way that we can build this into our homeschool and give my children that valuable experience that's going to benefit them later in life. The more I've worked with the staff, that is what I value most of all in the program. I deeply appreciate that we have invested in full-time employees. They're available to address my questions and concerns, and they take that very seriously. Also, because we have a lot of consistency in the staff from year to year, we've developed relationships. The staff know my children. My children know the staff. That makes them a valuable resource in giving me valuable feedback about their development, both academically and in my family. We've had a couple of other questions or situations that come up of, we're having this issue. Are you seeing that at school, and what does it look like? And because they've had years of contact with my children, they're able to answer that very knowledgeably and helpfully. As my children have grown, the program has continued to meet our needs. I'll have two middle schoolers in the fall. We have opened enrolled our oldest and plan to do both of them next year at Roosevelt for Project Lead the Way classes. The school district is offering hands-on computer science and engineering, pre-engineering courses that I can't duplicate at home. So we take them in, they attend that class, and then they come back home for the rest of their subjects for the day. We loved it last year. My son, who is not, he's a 13-year-old boy, so he doesn't get excited about a whole lot, except for video games. And near the end of the year, I said, you know, how has this experience been? Should we do it next year? And I didn't tell him it wasn't really a choice, but I wanted, let him think he had some input, and he said, absolutely, I want to come back for the eighth-grade component last year. So that is the best endorsement I can give the program. Personally, we evaluate each child each year to determine what is going to be the best for this child's education, and so far, the HSAP has met our needs the best, and we are very happy to be able to continue with it. So in closing, I want to urge you as a board to value and invest in the homeschool assistance program. Homeschooling continues to increase in popularity in Iowa and across the country, and that really puts us in a unique position. We can not only retain the students that are already in the program by investing in it, but we have the opportunity to attract students into our district as well, as families are looking for alternative educational options when the traditional classroom is not meeting their students' needs. Thank you.
I'd like to introduce Rebecca Hoagland, who graduated from our program last year and has agreed to come and discuss her experiences briefly.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Hoagland, and as Anne said, I'm a 2012 graduate of the Cedar Rapids Homeschool Assistance Program. I was homeschooled from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade, and this gave me many opportunities that shaped the person I am today. From kindergarten through fifth grade, I attended the homeschool classes, as well as having monthly home visits with Deanna. Throughout my homeschool years, I attended many field trips and participated in learning fairs, which gave me the opportunity to share what I had learned with others. As I entered my high school years, being homeschooled gave me more opportunities. During my freshman and sophomore years, I attended high school classes, learning about writing and art and even poetry with Ms. Anne. With my mom not being much of a science person, Ms. Deanna really helped with the dissections for biology, and I wouldn't have made it through it without her. Because of the flexibility of homeschooling, I was be, I was able to branch out and become involved in many different activities. I loved dancing and spent many hours a week at the studio, both taking classes and teaching. I also became involved in 4H in fourth grade, and this gave me many opportunities to explore different interests, including my interest in agriculture. I also had the opportunity to participate in job shadows through Workplace Learning Connection, as well as two internships during my senior year, one with a grain and hog farmer and the second with a seed dealer. During my senior year, I also took some agricultural classes at Kirkwood Community College. Because I was homeschooled, my, my schedule was flexible enough for me to take nine credit hours both semesters. Taking these classes really helped me to focus in on what I wanted to do in life. The freedom and flexibility that comes from homeschooling was perfect for me. The guidance and assistance that my family and I received through the Cedar Rapids Homeschool Assistance Program enabled me to make the most of my education. I found so many opportunities through homeschooling, and these have helped me to shape who I am today. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you have a good idea now of the opportunities and impact of our homeschool assistance program, and we'd be open to any questions you might have.
Great presentation. I learned a lot. Thank you.
My question is, as we prepare students to be college and career-ready, you've obviously had a good experience with that. Do we provide services like our traditional students in the high schools would have for counseling and, and career advisement and that sort of thing?
A lot of that support comes through the Workplace Learning Connection, and I think you've heard the kinds of experiences that go on there. We do, of course, have students dual-enroll for coursework, and they'll be dual-enrolled for the career academies, the things that are going to be at the Kirkwood Regional Center. Post-secondary enrollment options are the same for these students, and so they take a lot of coursework. Some of them may complete a year of coursework before entering post-secondary institutions. So we have a lot of opportunities available.
Terrific.
Here.
I have a question for Sheri. And I'm, I'm not sure it's a fair question, but I'm going to ask it anyway because of the fact we have very little exposure to the homeschool program. And as you know, there's quite a debate going on in legislation right now, and one of the key elements that is being discussed is expanding, being allowed to expand the homeschool program that a teacher could take on for, I believe, what I'm hearing, for non-related students. Would you have any, any comment or any, any, what you're feeling, would you feel willing or prepared to, to take on someone else's child?
That is not of interest to me personally. Homeschoolers are very different. Some are certified teachers. I have friends that homeschool their children that are licensed and certified teachers, but have chosen to educate their own children at home. And that, my understanding of that legislation is that it's being pushed by a lobbying and a homeschool support group that's independent of the HSAPs. Most of the people, it's not exclusive, but a number of the members of that group and most of the leadership have chosen to enroll, or to homeschool independently. So they're using CPI, and they, my understanding of that is that they really want to expand those options for people that are not associated with the homeschool assistance program. Not that it would be limited necessarily, but that impetus is really coming from a group not related to and not utilizing HSAPs to the best of my knowledge.
Thank you for the information.
You're welcome.
It was very, very interesting. Appreciate it.
I got a couple of questions for you. Workplace Learning Connection, you mentioned that. I just got associated with those folks recently, and I went through the interview process. I assumed the young lady went through the interview process, and how many internships did you have?
I had two internships, as well as two job shadows previous during my junior year. So I interviewed the summer before my senior year, as well as the winter before the spring of my senior year for the internships.
You were considered a Cedar Rapids student through the, or the interview process?
I was actually considered a homeschool student, part of the Cedar Rapids Homeschool Assistance Program. So I, like all the other students are listed under their high school, I was listed under the homeschool assistance program.
Reason I ask, they had 200 students go through this this year. We had three from Cedar Rapids. We had three from Cedar Rapids interview in that 200-person group and they're from Jefferson High School. And something more for Dr. Benson's information, but it was interesting. I want to see how they counted you at that time because it's not really promoted at the level that it once was, is what I hear. And I didn't know how you got involved in it, other than maybe your mom told you about it or somehow a friend told you about it?
It was through Ms. Deanne and my mom. Deanne had had the information. So I had filled out the application. So it was sent in through the homeschool program and I was entered as a homeschool student.
And those three students I'm referring to were high school students that I could easily pick out. But the homeschool kids, it may not have been clear to me when I was looking through the list. How many homeschool kids this year went through the Workplace Learning Connection process, do you know?
Let me think. We had probably four or five who did job shadows either once or multiple times. And I know that there's a student right now who is going through the interview process for the next job shadow. Maybe two did job shadows this year.
That's not a big number. You have 300 people in your program, but there are a lot of young people, right? There's probably not that many that are eligible for it.
And I work directly with the people at the Workplace Learning Connection and we make sure that they get the information about deadlines and when things are due. And we try to promote it because it's such a good opportunity for these kids to get out into the community and kind of test the waters.
The Washington Kennedy kids aren't allowed to go to these interviews, I think is what they tell them. Something's weird going on there, but we'll get to the bottom of that. The other question I have is, how many homeschool students 10 years ago, you have 300 today, were there 310 years ago, were there 10 years... You know, any idea, is it growing? Is it... My reason for the question, is this something that... Is this a wave that we should be riding? Or is it just something that's going to continue at a steady pace?
What maintains it at a steady pace more than interest is staffing. And so we are often limited by staffing because of the laws concerning numbers and numbers of families and numbers of students with whom we can work. So it is apparent that there is a growing interest in homeschooling. There are many different reasons that people homeschool and we're seeing a lot more students who are coming, who have, who are Aspergers, who are on the autistic spectrum, who have anxiety issues, who have been bullied. So we're getting a little bit of a different population than I would say 10 or 15 years ago when I first started in the program. But we still have the original population, but we're just getting kind of some different demographics now that make it very challenging. You know, we have some interesting students, you know, who come in who have... And they have a safe place to come to class and are, you know, it's a good situation for many of them.
Yeah, and I can talk to Dr. Benson later and the rest of the board about this, but I just wondered if it was something that's growing or staying the same? Or it sounds like it's a limitation on the level of staffing?
It is growing a little bit and we are limited by the current staffing that we have. Often during the school year, we have a waiting list because we don't have adequate staff. If that list persists into the next year and we're convinced that they will enroll in our program, then we'll look at adding additional staff based on the additional funding that we would receive for the program. But the program operates strictly off of the revenue that it generates. So we have to be really careful about that balance between staff and enrollment.
Yeah, my last question is, we have this graphic we've been given before. We have 400 students that open enroll out of our school district into Marion for homeschooling reasons. And 10 years ago, there were 200 students that opened enrolled into Marion. And I was trying to figure out now, you know, if it goes to 800 students, you know, 10 years from now and 1600 students, I mean, where does it end? You know, is it something that we're controlling? Are we closing this spigot, opening this spigot? What are we doing with this program?
That's really up to the families and whether they apply for open enrollment. And so it's a parental choice and I think you've heard tonight that people choose different programs for a variety of reasons. So it's not something that we can really control. If they apply in time for open enrollment, then, you know, we honor those requests we're required to by code.
But it sounded like you said that there's a waiting list. So my theory is, is that if there's a waiting list, then those people have no other choice than to open enroll into Marion.
No, no. If there's a waiting list, we'll add staff if we have families that want to enroll into our program.
Okay, I misunderstood.
Yeah. I should mention that we have a commencement coming up here next week, in case you don't have enough graduations to attend. I'll let you talk about how many students will be graduating from the homeschool assistance program. We're at about 15. Not everyone attends. We have a lovely graduation ceremony that's held at Co-College in the auditorium that I can't pronounce. Thank you. Kitchen Daler. And anyway, it's a beautiful little auditorium and we do a cap-and-gown ceremony and the kids have worked hard to get finished with their work. And we would love to see you if you'd like to come.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next information is on the School Improvement Plan in Progress, Arthur Elementary School. Mary?
Very good.
Angie? Oh, you're right there.
Vice President Humbles, Dr. Benson, members of the board. It's my pleasure to introduce Angie Hoyer, the principal from Arthur Elementary, who will be sharing information about the life and actions of their school improvement plan this year at Arthur Elementary. Earlier this year, you heard from Carla Reese and Becky Martin about the extensive process that we put into place for school improvement planning and for implementation of those plans. This evening, it's kind of a timely event that Angie is going to be sharing information about the Arthur School Improvement Plan because I think you'll get a picture of how those plans aren't just a piece of paper that's put into a notebook and is set on the shelf or on the counter. It's actually something that guides the work that is done in that school community based on the data that was gathered about the needs of that school community. While Angie will be sharing Arthur's School Improvement Plan, it's reflective of what the school improvement plans look like in our elementary and middle schools and the work that's been done to create those, and also reflective of the needs of the students at Arthur. So their school improvement plan looks different than any other elementary school, but it is representative of the process that we use to do that. Angie will be sharing their plan. And the other thing to keep in mind is she talks about how they've modified it throughout the school year as they've worked through it, how it has guided their professional development. And we will be meeting, actually, all of the schools will be meeting on June 4th to review the progress on their school improvement plans for this year, looking at that data, and then also developing plans for the next school year's school improvement plan. So I'm going to have Angie go ahead and go on over to the podium and share Arthur's School Improvement Plan.
When I first got here and saw the agenda, I'm like, oh, I'm kind of toward the end, bummer. And then as everyone left, I'm like, oh, I'm kind of toward the end. So it was all good. Okay, I'm gonna... I'm kind of a mover. I'll do my best to stay right here. Okay, Justin, are you going to click for me or do you want me to click? Can you hear me? You want me to click? Okay. Okay, we don't have these clickers at my place, so this is nice. Okay, first of all, whoever is keeping time, you're going to want to keep time on me because I could talk about this stuff all night long. This stuff is very interesting. There's so many things to share and talk about. So I tried to make, I tried to cut it down a little bit. We have, in our school improvement plan, we have more than three goals, but I'm just kind of highlighting three for tonight's purposes. But feel free to come to Arthur at any time and you can see more of our stuff. So our literacy goal is we're trying to increase the percentage of students that are reading at grade level. We measure that with, it's called Fanta-Simpinell and essentially it's a, the kids read different books at different levels depending on the grade level they're in. And then there are questions that are asked. They do a quick retell and then there are questions. If you look at the questions, half of them, little less than half, are all on recall, directly what they are reading in the story, and the rest are the inferential or higher-order thinking questions. And from our data, from our Iowa assessment data and some of the data that we had in our building from tests, we found that they were doing great on the retail questions, but it was the inferential questions where you had to use kind of what you know and what you read in the book. That was where we needed to focus at Arthur. Our math goal was to increase the proficiency on the Iowa Core District Assessment. And we were focusing on that as well because Iowa Core had just come out. We'd been using our student learning expectations that we have used for a district before Iowa Core came out. So we were really in a good spot, but the rigor of the Iowa Core was up a little bit. So we really wanted to focus on really looking at that Iowa Core and what our kids needed to know. And then our SEB goal, Arthur is, this is our first year of being a PBIS school. And so our goal this year was to be able to teach the Common Area Expectations for all of Arthur students. So those are the three goals. Thought he was messing with me and turned my clicker off. Okay. He would do that. Okay, what we do is, and we've changed this up a little bit, I've only been at Arthur for three years. And so our first year, we wrote our school improvement plan and we would talk about it at different staff meetings. But we didn't go back to it as often as I felt that we needed to be going back to. In elementary, as you know, we teach everything. We teach math, reading, social, I mean, all of it, except for music, art, and gym. So we needed a way, with so many irons in the fire, we needed a way to be able to have that laser-like focus to make sure that we knew that we were doing what our research had told us. So we have what we call Art Action Research Teams at Arthur and they meet once a month. So all of our certified staff members are on either, we have three of them. They are either on the art, I'm sorry, the math ART team, the reading ART team, or the SEB ART team. And we kind of focus on those three. We also have a PLC goal and my instructional coach and I work with that. So every single month, we get together and then so obviously the literacy or the reading ART team, they are focused 100% on looking at our goal, looking at our action steps and seeing, okay, where are we on a monthly basis? So when we have those meetings every month, we're all, all three committees are in different spots and we focus on our four PLC questions. So we look at, what do we really want students to be able to do? And then we do a lot of sorting of data. How are we going to know if they've learned it? So what is mastery at this point in the year? And then what are we going to do if they have not learned it? But then also, what are we going to do if they already know it? And then a lot of what I really like about what we're doing with the SIP plan this year is we really are kind of doing the Plan Due Study Act. So we get together one month and as we look at our data, if it's not working, we switch. So we revamp, we relook at kids and we switch what we're doing. In the past, we had not always switched what we were doing. We would kind of plod along and continue with our goals, but not necessarily change what we were doing. Okay, so this is an example of our literacy goal and which I know you've seen all the school improvement plans, but you know, we have a goal and then we have different activities that we are going to implement to reach that goal. So these are a couple of our activities for our literacy. One deals with staff, well, a couple deal with staff. But our first one was to actually, we needed to in-service staff and teachers on, how do you teach inferential thinking? That's not, you think that's easy, that is not easy. It is very, you'd think, you know, you tell the kids, well, it's just what you know in your brain and then what's connected to the book. Way, way harder than that. So we had a lot of PD structured on what are good inferential questions. And then after we learned about it and learned what they were and how to do them better, then what we did is we spent PLC time getting together and actually writing these questions together using our core curriculum, which is the McMillan. And we wanted to start with doing one question with the whole group story. There's a whole group story in McMillan through every grade. So we have a whole group story that all the kids read and that's on a grade-level passage. And then every student also is in a small group reading. And then that is based on, it could be based on skill, it could be based on level, lots of different things. So then we also wanted two questions to be asked, inferential questions to be asked to the students every single week in that small group. So that's kind of where we focused in our PLCs, is to write one question for the whole group and then two questions for each small group, and then we collaborated on those questions. It's interesting how you can be sitting with other people and think it's an inferential question and the next person's like, that's not inferential, it's right there. So that was a very good process. Okay, so what was our expected impact by teachers learning how to write good inferential questions? Or what that means is that then our reading, we were hoping to improve our reading comprehension on a daily basis because we're going to have better questions being asked every single week, every single day. The monitoring of that, we have, you can come and see, we have lists of inferential questions that we can use next year, but we'll also tweak those as well. We rewrote questions and I rewrote questions and I'm going to show you that here in a minute, how we had to adjust that. Same, I won't read to you. So you kind of know, you kind of know where I'm going with this. Okay. So what we found out through our meetings where we meet every month, what we found out is that the questions needed to be, we did need to rewrite questions. And also the data collected from the formative assessments that each teacher was using, we analyzed that and the students were not performing, the students not performing needed additional instruction in the shared groups. So then... What we found by that is we were getting together and we're looking at our data. As you see, that unit five, that was our data, it's not very good. So we have, the reds mean they did not get it. They did not get any points for that particular question. And this is data from the McMillan reading test. So in unit five, you can see we had some zeros, we had some ones, we had a couple of twos. So we went back together as grade levels and we said, okay, why are we getting, why is it so inconsistent? Why aren't our kids getting this? Well, what we found out is that some teachers were asking the inferential questions like on Thursday, after they had gone through and read the stories and the kids had already read the books and they'd had major discussions with them. They were doing pretty well. And then we found out that, so then we talked about how we need to be more consistent in how we are doing this. You know, this needs to be a cold read, so we need to ask inferential questions at the beginning so we can see where our kids are going. So we developed a protocol, so we could, so across the board, we were all doing the same thing. We also decided that we needed more data points. Our unit tests were not giving us enough information to guide our instruction. So that's when we added more formative assessments in the classroom. So as we had different books the kids were reading as well, so then we added inferential questions for that. I talked about that already. So then, as you see, then we went to our next unit and we were finding that we were getting a deeper understanding. So we made it more consistent in the classrooms and we were seeing good results with that. We did use some teacher quality money to get people together to be able to analyze more data for that. We just needed more time. There's just not enough time between that eight to four or seven when some of our teachers go home. Okay, so our students are using inferential and higher-order thinking skills in whole and small groups still. Very excited. Right now, the teachers are doing the Fanta-Simpinell testing. So we're just really close to find out, to finding out how well we did on our goal. Were they, are they reading at grade level? And then what we'll do is we'll analyze the inferential questions from that test to see how our kids are, how they've improved. So we're kind of excited for that. Okay, I'll give you a timer. Am I okay? Okay. Math, action steps for math. Okay, this is again where we're really trying to step up the rigor in our math because we were using our SLEs, but each grade level, the rigor went up. So we wanted to make sure we were doing that. So what we were doing is we're using our unit tests. So we have our Iowa Core curriculum that we need to teach, but then we also have our program that we're using to be able to teach those Iowa Core standards, which we often need to pull in other things to help those kids that are not learning or kids that need more. So we looked at those pre, those unit tests, those pre-unit tests to really look for those student learning expectations or the Iowa Core that we needed to look at. And then we would develop our lessons according to, every classroom would look different according to what our kids already knew or what they did not know, so we could focus on what they needed to know. With that SLE assessment, we take that three times a year and that's the math assessment that we take. We got together as PLCs and we looked at the math test. And math, you would normally think, oh, it's either wrong or it's right. But the way the test is written, you could get zero points, you could get one point, you could get two points. So we got together as PLCs and we talked about that so that we were all scoring and looking at the test in a consistent way. So that was a big part of our work in PLCs and really discussing, what does that mean? Fabulous conversations about that because if we all looked at a math problem, we could all think of it in several different ways. So making sure that we understood that is the same. Our expected impact was that we would have focused laser-like instruction in math. So we were really meeting those student SLEs. And how do we, how did we monitor that or are we monitoring that? We are focusing, we would adjust the core as needed. So when we looked at our pre-test, we would adjust. If there's an SLE that every child in the class already had, we're not going to spend time on that. We need to spend time on the ones that they do not have. We analyzed the scores of each student in our PLCs. And then from there, we provided enrichment activities for kiddos that were already getting a lot of the SLEs that were to be mastered by the end of the year. And then those kiddos that were having trouble with some of those, we would have small groups and do that during shared groups throughout the day to meet their needs as well beyond differentiating the core. Okay? So this is again, in our monthly meetings, what we found from our data is we needed to look more... needed to look more at the two underlined areas. So, what we did is we took, in PLCs, we use what's called, it's called an ASW format, it's Analyzing Student Work. And we do, we do it with all different topics, we do it with SEB topics, reading, math, all of that. So, what we did is, we tweaked or made our own ASW to match what we think we, what we needed from the math, because we were doing a great job of looking at the pre-tests and looking at our SLE tests, but then, we weren't doing such a good job of carrying, carrying that on, and making sure that we are really getting to the specifics. So, every grade level team sat down in a PLC meeting, and we literally looked at one Iowa Core standard at a time. So, we took that test, we looked at the data, specifically, where are we not getting it? What are those foundational skills? And this is just an example, and the, the standard is listed at top. And then, what we do is, we talked about, what is the standard? And then, we literally looked per grade level and per class, what kids have already mastered this? They are done and gone. Next steps? What, what do we need to do? And then, again, I'm reading to you, I apologize. So, you can see kind of how we did that, and then, that was, all of that was, was based with a conversation while we're actually looking at the student tests right in front of us. So, this really helped us move forward in math, and really helped us to differentiate the instruction that we had during our core math, as well as during the small groups that we were doing. Let's see, make sure I got everything on there. Okay? And the great thing about these teams is that it was teachers deciding this, so the teachers are looking at the input, they are deciding that. So, then, we get together at staff meetings, and then, each ART from the, the plans would talk to the staff and say, okay, guys, this is what we are finding out. Because all of the staff would turn in their data to the math ART team, and they would look at it as a whole. So, we weren't just looking at certain teachers, we were looking at our whole school. Oh, that's why I'm shaking, it's not working. Okay. I'm like, come on, hurt. Okay. So, I'm almost to the end here. Yeah. Now, I know, I'm the last slide. So, our, really, our high points of our School Improvement Plan for us this year, and like I say, every year, it's, it's different as we try to get better and better at it. But the high points, the high points for us have been really that meeting on a monthly basis, so we can really monitor what we're doing. It keeps it up in the forefront of what we're doing. The action steps, the great thing about our action steps, and again, this, the School Improvement Plan is written by our staff, so I mean, we are all giving input on this. But the action steps also focused on teacher learning and student learning, because we, as teachers, we have a lot to learn too, as we're going. So, that's, that's the other part that we have been happy with, with our School Improvement Plan. We love that it's fluid, and years ago, as a teacher, I always felt like, oh, that's the plan, that's how it stays. But I love that it is able to be fluid, and it changes as we, as we see what we need. And then, of course, that students are showing growth. And like I say, the most exciting growth, our formative assessments are showing growth. So, now, we want to see that growth on our final assessments coming up. Okay. So, thank you very much for letting me share that with you. If you have any questions, I can answer those now.
Are there any questions from the board?
Angie, thank you. It's a great presentation. When you're talking about the, looking at the strategic questions that you were, your groups were going through, and, and determining which were good questions, and narrowing down.
Is that, does that then become a block of knowledge that will be carried from year to year, so that you're, again, the, not we having to recreate the wheel, that once we have good questions? It was one, and I bring it up because it was one of the things that we saw in Chicago at one of the schools, that they did, they were really honing in on, on teaching, they'd actually have packed lessons that they, they taught, and they would teach in front of the, the rest of their division or whatever, to hone in that they had the best presentation, and it was consistent. So, I just see it as, as you said, the teachers are learning, that we carry that, that, that learning forward, and, and it truly becomes a professional learning community.
Yeah. It really does. Now, as soon, if we change reading programs, we're going to have to start over, but that's okay, because we know what we're doing now. And we can do that. The other advantage of that as well is that we have several paraprofessionals that help our students as well. And so, the teachers plan those lessons, and then, we have paraprofessional meetings every single month as well, where we get together and we go over those lessons and look at them. So, if they're working with small groups of kids, they're also going to get that quality instruction as well.
Angie, I do want to thank you, because I know how you got asked to do this presentation. So, I want to personally thank you for that.
No worries.
But besides that, this is exactly what we, as a board, have been hearing is going on in the elementary schools, and it's really reassuring to hear you and your staff doing exactly what we're thinking is going on. It's refreshing for me to hear too, that you, as the principal of this building, see yourself as a teacher, so the teacher leader in your buildings. And we saw that on many of our visits as well, that the principal and the administrative staff saw themselves as people that were there to help in that teaching area. So, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
That's one of our fun part of our days too, when we get to go in and actually teach, so.
Yes, absolutely. So, thank you.
Could you be a little more energetic?
And Justin's going to have to do pointer lessons, I think, that's the...
Next, we will have an update. Steve Graham.
That is a tough act to follow, I tell you. A lot of energy there. Any rate, on the eighth of April, Board of Education heard from members of the Facility Master Planning Steering Committee, and listened to the process that we followed over about a year's period of time, to identify $425 million of facility needs in our school district. They're divided into three components. $200 million was our identified operations and maintenance needs. Our facility, new facility possibilities were $105 million, and our selected projects from our steering committee were $150 million. Those are large numbers. At any rate, our $200 million in identified operation and maintenance projects is the reason why we're here tonight. And it's a, it's a significant disparity between identified needs and funding sources. And there are some opportunities here that we want to bring to your attention for consideration for future consideration. And the PPEL stands for the Physical Plant and Equipment Levy, so I'll try to avoid the acronyms and nomenclature, and, and speak in understandable ease here. At any rate, now, I've got to learn how to use this thing here. All right. Well, one too many. Okay. All right. The, the current voter-approved PEPAL, Physical Equipment and Levy Funding is a 10-year term, and that is the maximum duration under the law. It is going to expire on the 30th of June 2015, and the levy rate is currently set at 67 cents, which generates approximately $3.5 million. That 67 cents is one-half of the maximum allowed levy rate, according to state law. It's used for our facilities, maintenance, and operations. It's our brick and mortar money, and we've had this for a long period of time. The PEPAL will need to be renewed. As you can see, it'll be coming to an end, and just a little bit over one fiscal year from now, or I'm sorry, in June 30th of 2015. So, at any rate, considerations for voter-approved PEPAL funding are a variety here. These are just questions to pose, and we would like to talk about each of these questions. Will the term be 10 years? If we take this to our voters, would we look at something less than the maximum of 10 years? Second question to consider is, would the funding be property tax only? Or would we look at a blend of property tax and income surtax? Regardless of where we set our levy with our renewal of our PEPAL, we had no opportunity to blend surtax with the previous PEPAL levy that we're currently under today. In the future, because of a change in law, we can consider a blend of surtax. And surtax, by some, might be seen as a benefit over property tax, perhaps less regressive with those who may be on fixed incomes, who own their property, and because their incomes are perhaps low, the surtax would be a fairer tax as opposed to a property tax, something to consider going forward. And then, finally, I guess the third point is, would the funding level remain at 67 cents? Or would we look at something higher? And the maximum is $1.34, which would generate just under $7 million. And then, finally, would the PEPAL be restricted under the use under the law? Or would we allow the full use of the law governing the use of PEPAL funds? So, at any rate, we're going to drill into these, each of these four bullet points a little bit, and talk about them one by one. Historically, in terms of the 10-year term, we've had a PEPAL levy for 10 years, each of them ending in 2005, 1995, and 1985. So, we've had the PEPAL levy for a good number of years, and even before that, it used to be called the Schoolhouse Levy. For those of you who may have been around for a little long, longer than others, it has been around for many, many years. Again, would the funding be property tax only, or a combination of income surtax? Current levy is 100% property tax. We could look at something at as high as 5% income surtax, if we look at a maximum PEPAL levy going forward. And we have currently the use of income surtax with our ISL, our Instructional Support Levy. We have a 5% income surtax blend and local property tax driving the funding for the ISL. At any rate, Iowa schools can exceed, cannot exceed 20% income surtax. Again, the, the, the focus on how much money is generated by the two different levies, at one at 67 cents, and the maximum at $1.34. We currently are receiving a total of $5 million. We have a $5 million operation and maintenance program, and Rob Kleinsmith, our manager of Buildings and Grounds, is going to be talking with you a little bit about what we do with the current level of funding at $5 million, and what we may be doing if we increase that to a higher level. But at any rate, right now, we're looking at $5 million of revenue coming into our PEPAL fund. What we use the PEPAL fund for historically has been for the purchase and improvement of grounds, construction repair of schoolhouses, and the purchase of equipment, school buses and district vehicles. This is what we've been using our PEPAL resources for, and we have not restricted in a ballot the use of our PEPAL resources, although we could restrict that if the Board of Education believed that this was an appropriate position to take. Okay. So, I'm going to turn Rob Kleinsmith loose here with this slide, and to talk to you a little bit more about the detail of operations and maintenance.
Thanks, Steve. Rob Kleinsmith, our manager of Buildings and Grounds. Steve asked me to put together a plan here for the $5 million plan and the eight and a half million plan. And we kind of took a look at it from a ways of, with our Operation and Maintenance Manual, and how we came up with the projects. But the $5 million plan of, over the 10 years is going to be, is, as a plan focused on reactive maintenance with the use of district-wide accounts. And basically, what we're, what we're doing there is we're reacting to the need. When we have a fire alarm system that goes bad, or a burglar alarm system, we'll go in and replace those systems. It also focuses on the building envelope, the roofing, the tuck point, anything on the outside of the building, except for windows, the $5 million focuses on. And then, campus parking lots and asphalt playgrounds. We got to get our students and our staff into the building safely, and so, our $5 million plan focuses on, on that. The real difference is, is when we, when we go to the eight and a half million plan, we include everything on the $5 million plan, plus, we go after proactive maintenance. We start planning the replacement of many of the fixtures that we have, the infrastructure in our building. So, we've got a staged plan, and I think some of those, you have a copy of, in your packet, of what we're looking at for proactive. We also increased the investment in district vehicles and buses and equipment. We go from, I think, almost three-quarters of a million to a million dollars a year budgeted for the replacement of those things. And then, I said already, the components of the $5 million plan. Let's see, it went over here. How did Angie do that? There we go. In, in your, in your packets, you do have a full, a full report of, of the, of the plan that's attached. You do see the differences between, this is Erskine. You will see the differences between, here's the $5 million plan, we're looking at, over the 10 years, putting a half a million dollars into the building, where the eight and a half million dollar plan, it's almost a million dollars into the budget. So, that, that $3.5 million really goes into the building, and it almost doubles the money that we're, we're going to be putting in at Erskine. Oops. Go back to Wright. Wright's a very, no, we're going to go back twice. There it is, Wright. You can see the, the difference that we're making at Wright. We've got $130,000 planned over 10 years for Wright, working on the playgrounds, the concrete, and some gym floor refinishing. Where the eight and a half million, we get into roofing, dry erase boards, tile, carpets, fence replacement, master clocks, fire alarms, exterior lighting upgrades. And these are all based upon the life of those pieces of equipment, that it's, it's, you know, it's time to replace those things. Middle schools, I think it gets, for the most part, you can see a lot of similarities between the middle schools and getting into the high schools. For almost $2 million at Jefferson over 10 years versus the $5 million plan will be almost a half a million. So, it's a big chunk of money differences that we have in there. I think you're next, Steve.
Thanks, Rob. I think one thing it's important to, to point out is that the needs are very great. The resource needs are very great, and I don't want to have the board with a misunderstanding that if we were to double the levy to the maximum allowed by law, that we would fully fund our operations and maintenance plan. Unfortunately, we wouldn't. But we would do a better job of what we're doing in our operations and maintenance that we currently are doing. One of the, several of the principals that I had visited with when we were going through our site visits and doing our facility master plan, that I heard the theme was, just do the basics better. Do the basics better. Get my carpeting replaced, or my exterior doors fixed, you know, or the roofs that are leaking, or the tiles that need to be replaced. Just do the basics better, and I'll be more than happy to not have this submitted plan or plans that were submitted, these campus-based leadership team plans, to the steering committee for their selection. So, this is a, this is a very strong theme. And $200 million of identified needs is a very large number. And it includes HVAC systems and exterior window replacements at buildings that we've identified a need, but this funding, this, this consideration for doubling the PEPAL levy, still would not provide for resources for those two components that have been identified as operation and maintenance needs. So, you have to understand that while it goes a long way to improving where we're at currently, it still doesn't fully fit, fill all of the identified needs in operations and maintenance. We do have currently $65 million of unobligated silo resources as well for facilities. Still, you add those two together, and you're talking something, if you maximize this levy, something in the $150 million range total. Still pales in comparison to $425 million. But it is a step in the right direction. The work that has been done over the past year has been exemplary by those who participated, the work that they've done. We certainly respect their efforts, and it is with that in mind that we bring this to you for, for your consideration going forward. So, at any rate... So at any rate, the next election that we have, because we're on biannual school board elections now as opposed to every year, we have an opportunity to put this on the bell on the 14th of September. I'm sorry, on the 10th of September, this year, the 10th of September. If we don't, then we would be looking at the possibility of a special election, and February the 4th and April the 1st are two opportunities. If we don't take those opportunities, then we really miss our target, because the next school board election isn't until two years. It would be in 2015, and it would be too late, you see. So timing is of the essence now that we have going forward. And at any rate, that's just a sense of overall need and timing of an election. I guess I'm just going to stop there. We'll stop there and answer questions that you may have.
Any questions from the board? Alan?
I'm behind Keith down here. Great presentation, thank you very much. Just trying to figure out here this PEPAL vote. The timing seems right to get it done sooner than later. I think the facility plan a year ago was put in motion to identify those needs, and I think the most important thing, as any election goes, is to identify what that money will be spent on, clearly, so there's not this feeling of confusion. And so there's going to be some work there, but I support 100% the idea of moving this forward to a September vote, just because of the identified needs, as long as we're careful on how we structure the presentation, if you will, of what it's going to be used for. The question I have is the restroom upgrade, for instance, at Jefferson slated this year. You know, it's in the budget this year. Of all the things that are a pet peeve of mine is the restrooms are not the best. I mean, they've been deferred maintenance for a long, long time. And I just can't seem to wrap my mind around, and Rob, maybe you can answer this question, when you got here, is how did it get so bad? How do we get ourselves out of this? From your experience, do you make that a priority? Do you prioritize things not just on a peanut butter and jelly basis? Do you prioritize things based on what the public sees? And the kitchens, or not kitchens, but the dining rooms are being upgraded at Jefferson and Washington? I mean, those seem very obvious to me that we would focus on those first and not just go peanut butter method. So what's been your experience?
Well, I think you make a good comment there. The one thing, you know, I've been asked many times, how do we get ourselves into this position? And I've always said, let's not look back, let's move forward. And this plan does that. I think as far as the identified projects that you have on there, they're listed on there. Those buildings know, you know, the building principals constantly call me and ask me, when are we going to do this? That's designated on your plan, right there. They know in year nine, they know we're going to come and replace the burglar alarm or something of that nature. So it's very detailed, they know when they're going to be coming. That should put some ease at some of the principals. But as far as the question on your restrooms, I would agree. We do have some issues with restroom upgrades that need to take place. You'll notice on those packets, those buildings are listed. We're going to concentrate on every building to try to upgrade at least one over the next 10 years on your list there. Is that enough? Some would say we need more. I know I've seen a lot of emails over the past month that principals have asked for the restrooms upgraded. Well, you know, we just can't do it on $5 million. $8.5 million does provide some help there in going through every building at least once, and getting that main restroom by the office, getting that upgraded to, so it's presentable for the public. So we do address it.
It sounds like a silly campaign, but that would be the campaign for the PEPAL increases, the idea of upgrading the restrooms to ADA standards to, because you've got 1.9 million a year that you use for work orders, I mean, that's almost half the budget. And I know, we talked about this before, and again, that's one of those things where you tend to chase your tail, and you can't ever catch it. You just spin around and around because you spent $100,000 on this restroom to kind of maintain it, and this one, and you're just, you can't ever get ahead of it. And so we've got ourselves in a predicament here, which is going to require a lot of, I think, courage by this board to get us out of it, which means that to provide Dr. Benson administration some support on the PEPAL increase, because without it, you're exactly right, we're in a world of hurt, and we're continuing spending 1.9 million a year, every year, for things that we'll never catch up to.
I call it reactive maintenance. That's what we're doing. Instead of being proactive and going after them, we're reacting to problems.
Thank you.
Gary?
The issue is, that John raised is, is the same with 8.5 million, we're falling behind every single year. This has been a continuation that our maintenance to our buildings is just plain underfunded. And with that in mind, this is so crucial to what we're doing, are we looking to any outside groups or whatever to help sponsor this, to assure that this does pass?
Well, that's a very timely question, Keith. I think that our history has been that putting the ballot on the school board election has been met with a lot of support, natural support. Those who have gone to school board elections and voted for school board members have tended to be supporters of our school community. And so I think the timing of this being placed on a school board election ballot is an appropriate timing. Beyond that, I've not had conversations with Dr. Benson regarding what we may be doing as a school district to market a campaign of sorts.
My point is, to ask the second question, I don't think we can just make that assumption. It's too crucial to our whole district that this pass.
You know, Mary isn't with us tonight, but we did have that conversation on a trip to Des Moines this weekend. I think she's pretty aware that that would need to happen, so I don't know if she's had that conversation yet.
We'll gear up.
I do have a question. So I appreciate this. I appreciate hearing that the facilities master plan was considered in creating this. And since I've been on the board for six years, I have questioned this ongoing and growing deferred maintenance, and seen my own children's schools have continued basic maintenance issues. But I also understand that we've had state cuts and state funding decreases in education that, since I've been on this board, we've been fighting to have adequate funding. And even traveling into Chicago, I see, you know, although the cost of living there is more, I see amazing amounts of funding going into schools and older buildings that looked really, really sharp. Great bathrooms, great floors, you know, they really had pride in those. And I want us to be to that point. But getting back to that, we've focused to make sure that we've had the best teachers, the best possible staffing we can, to give all of our staff, you know, the funding that we need, and yet we've seen 10% across-the-board cuts and all these things. Can you tell us a little bit, and to help the public and us understand, how that funding from the state, the per student, or whatever it has been, the across-the-board cuts, have maybe cut into what we're able to do with this? To explain a little bit more, why are we at the point we're at right now?
There's been an incremental creep of changing the use of the schoolhouse levy, now PEPAL levy. It used to be exclusively for brick and mortar. Districts used to use their general fund to buy school buses and all district vehicles. Dr. Benson remembers this back in Fort Madison. They changed the rules about maybe 15, 20 years ago. They said, because of pressure on the general fund and finding ways of stretching the general fund dollars further, they said, legislature said, let's enhance the legal uses of the PEPAL fund. Let's allow school districts to buy vehicles. Well, we did the same thing that most every other Iowa school district did. We moved all of our expenditures for vehicles over to PEPAL, because we needed to stretch the resources of the general fund. What did that do to the brick and mortar dollars? It reduced those because of that. And more recently, you now can buy equipment. And it used to be that equipment was defined as something of a unit value of $1,500. Today, they've diluted that even further, they being the legislature and the Iowa Administrative Code, to $500 per transaction. So you can buy all kinds of equipment, all added together, as long as it's a $500 transaction in the PEPAL fund. Again, diverting general fund resources, stretching those general fund resources, and diluting the focus of the PEPAL fund. These are the kinds of things that schools across the state have experienced that have reduced the funding for brick and mortar specific projects, and it has caused harm over the long term.
Yeah, I had a question about the voter-approved portion of the levy. Is that something that's done on a 10-year basis also?
The voter-approved...
I'm sorry, no, I meant to say the board-approved levy.
The board-approved levy is for one-year duration only. There's no opportunity to go more than one year.
Oh, okay.
And it's certified within the budget. When we do our budget certification on the 8th of April, the certified budget includes a levy component for the board-approved PEPAL.
So it's not a separate vote, it's just in that budget?
No.
Okay. And then if we look at the income surtax option, is that on all income taxes for the state? So it'd be corporate and individual? Or is it just? I don't know quite. I mean, I know how property tax cert works. I just, I'm not real sure how the income surtax piece works.
Those are corporate and personal income taxes within the boundaries of the Cedar Rapids School District.
Okay. I mean, I know when I do my tax return, I see the income surtax for Cedar Rapids. I just didn't know if that applied to all entities that pay income taxes.
And it generates $1.3 million per 1%. That's the current rate.
Okay. And then just, sorry, one other question had to do with, when you look forward in the planning, you know, we've had a lot of upgrades on buildings, especially a lot of HVAC upgrades. And generally, those systems last anywhere from 15 to 25 years, average life. So maybe that's beyond the timeframe here, but I'm thinking that those are going to be things that need to be addressed at some point, too, that we didn't have in the past. So are those in the plan now, or is that still a little bit too far out to start thinking about those?
You're talking about the ones that we've already upgraded.
Right. So this goes out nine or 10 years?
Right.
Right? And so then by then, so we started doing some upgrades with bond money eight or 10 years ago. So, right?
Silo.
Sorry, with silo. And so I'm just thinking, in looking at the current inventory and when things expire, at some point, at least, if it's not in here yet, at some point, I mean, we're upgrading, we've upgraded the HVAC at McKinley. So at some point, that's going to need reinvestment. And are those things in this plan yet, or is that still future unfunded deferred?
There are parts of the buildings that are from McKinley and for our middle schools and our high schools, but there is no mechanical money sit in there.
Like HVAC stuff?
Right.
Okay. That's what I was wondering, if there's HVAC deferred maintenance items in there yet?
Not for the next 10 years, no.
Okay.
There's nothing in there.
Which is even more of a reason to look at raising, increasing the levies.
I believe there is two mechanical projects that are incorporated into the $8.5 million plan. We have a real issue out at Hiawatha, and that's our number one. As soon as we can get enough funding to go after that building, we need to do that one as soon as we can, and that one's in tough shape. So that one's marked in there, but I don't think it's in there till like year six or something like that, so.
All right, thank you.
Steve, can you tell us just a little bit about, maybe you have already in other presentations,
but how comparative school districts like ours are using this or not? I mean, if we did this, are we going to have our PEPAL way above others and?
That's a very good question, John, and I don't have an answer for you. And we certainly can do a comparison of UAN schools, Lynn County schools, to see, I'm sure the state has data on schools and what their PEPAL levies are, and whether or not they're using an income surtax component, too. We can look into that.
Yeah. Let's do that, we'll share that.
Any other questions?
Great presentation.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
That's for staff.
Board of Governors, we have the policy manual review and revisions with Dr. Benson and Laurel.
The Policy Review Committee is bringing tonight for your consideration some policies, regulations, and procedures out of the 500 series, which deals with staff. And in addition, bringing forward one regulation that deals with student records, which came to us from the Iowa Association of School Boards and recommended revisions. We are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I just had one question, and I did not go back and read the whole 500 series, but asked it in an email, so hopefully you can tell me. Nepotism, I'm assuming, is addressed in this, because I didn't see it in this part of the policies, so.
Nepotism is a separate regulation.
Separate regulation, okay.
Well, we'll bring these back. If you see comments, let us know.
A couple of questions. First of all, in Policy Employment, Policy 502, we're scratching the words, we're eliminating the sentence, employees should be able and willing to work together harmoniously and Why are we eliminating...
I believe with the committee, that that was a philosophical statement. It really didn't deal effectively with the policy.
And that's essentially covered in the standards, the teacher standards that have been adopted in the state since the advent of that policy.
Well, I just want to note that we're not looking for employees that are not willing to work together and harmoniously and effectively, that, well, that it's...
Philosophical.
Yeah. It's covered in the teacher standards.
Okay. I think those are important characteristics that we should be looking for.
Absolutely.
Okay. The other isn't, I've got a, it has to do with the new procedures for support personnel, non-certified employees, and the hiring practices for that. The way I read this now, that the board is taken out of those actions. My concern is that, how is the public going to be made aware of? How will we be made aware of what the positions are? Is there hired and what the rate is? I'm afraid we'll lose some transparency when we do this.
We share that same concern. We are not taking it off the board agenda. It will still be a part of the personnel report. But by code, the superintendent may approve the hiring of classified employees, non-certified administrations, so...
By our code?
By Iowa code.
By Iowa code.
And that's not a new, that's not a revision or a recent update, that's the way it's been. But through Policy Review Committee, we did believe that that was a reflection of Iowa code, but we also understood that we thought it was important to continue to bring that forward on the personnel report as a matter of record and as a matter of your information.
From a practical point of view, occasionally, we get into dilemmas about when people start versus when they get approved by the board. By making this switch, we can go ahead and meet the needs of our faculty and our students, yet still maintain the transparency and the reportability to the board that you're asking for. So we think it meets both interests.
I do know, one of the policies, or several, they're added, that subject to approval by the board, and that the potential employee knows that they have to meet all of the requirements that were stated in the application. Other concern that I have in the hiring process, what is proposed, that there would still, the way I read it, there's still a hiring team at the sites, chaired by the building administrator designee, I believe, is the way it's written. But that that hiring team would send to the HR department, Human Resources Department, two nominees, and the HR department then makes that selection of the employee from the two nominees.
I'll let Jill address that question.
What we're saying there is that they would refer them for reference checking to the Human Resource Department, then we would report that reference checking to them. I understand that in some cases, it will be done beforehand in those steps.
Right.
But the whole... But the whole goal is to just ensure that those reference checks have been done, that the background checks have been done. And then, we wouldn't be making the decision, but we would just be letting them know what that is, to confer with them on those results.
Okay. I think, the way I read it, and I'll have to go back, but I think it looks like, the way I read it, it was, yes, you make the, you make those reference checks, which are good, and then go back and report if there are any inconsistencies and so on to the hiring team. But then, I think the next step, the way I read it, was that the HR department would make the selection of the employee or whatever it was, from the two submitted.
I think that we just want the opportunity to intervene if sometimes a reference check, sometimes when you're very excited about a candidate during an interview, you, you know, may not hear all the things that you need to hear in that reference check. We just want to be an independent third party to...
I would agree. I agree with that. I just, I think as we go back, that we make sure there's, that it is referred back to, that the hiring team at the site is doing the final recommendation.
If you can point that out specifically where you...
I will.
Where that occurs.
Okay, I'll send that to you. Thank you.
And we'll take a look at that language.
Sure. Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, that's the intent. Okay.
I read this as well, and I think your intent was clear to me, but then I haven't been through your hiring process. So, but it was clear to me that it would be the hiring administrator upon the recommendation of the Human Resource Department. So, number nine, I think, where the final selection, maybe that's where Gary's at with being made by the approval of the Executive Director of Human Resources and the cabinet-level administrator. For me, that might be tweaked a little bit, but...
I remember that now. That is what happens now. I mean, that, so we were just kinda codifying that step. Building administrator might make a recommendation, but if it's for secondary, Gary O'Malley needs to sign off on that. And also, Human Resources always signs off, and that's, of course, to make sure background checks and things like that are completed, so.
But if you can bring that to our attention, Gary, specifically where you think that is, we'll take a look.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Benson.
It was recommended that the board have an exempt session for strategies related to union and non-union employee groups. Does this require a...
No, this is simply informational that the board will be meeting in an exempt meeting following the closed session and the adjournment of this meeting tonight.
And then, the next item is the closed session for evaluation of professional competencies of an individual whose performance is being considered and who has agreed to be discussed in closed session. And that does require a motion.
A motion, right.
Second, right.
No move.
We have three, Dan.
Read those things.
You don't need to read as long as the indicated, so moved based on Dr. Benson's...
I second.
And it's seconded. Okay.
And that's a real call.
All right. Director Ann Hall?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Whit?
Aye.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
Director Laberty?
Aye.
Vice President Humbles?
Aye.
Okay.
Do we have a video?
Yes, we have a retiree recognition video.
Cedar Rapids Community School District is proud to recognize the career contributions of our retiring employees. The efforts of these teachers, support staff members, and administrators have enriched the lives of thousands of students and have strengthened the district and community. I am pleased to congratulate them on their accomplished careers and to thank them for their dedicated years of service.
During her tenure as a district media specialist, Colleen most enjoyed the planning and fun of the annual Books Habit workshops, where she and students had an opportunity to meet and learn from the authors and illustrators who visited Cedar Rapids. As a teacher librarian, she worked at McKinley, Taylor, Cleveland, and Grant. Now serving as PACT resource specialist, Colleen works with students at Coolidge and Truman. She has also worked with the PACT programs at Van Buren, Hoover, Nixon, Hiawatha, and Madison. She treasures time with gifted and talented students who she says constantly amaze her with their energy, enthusiasm, and creativity in activities including construction, Invent Iowa, Pie Day, Kentucky Derby Day, medieval banquets, and Greek feasts. Colleen has been a member of the district staff for 21 years. Her retirement will begin with a move this summer to Boise, Idaho. After that, she and her husband will enjoy figuring out what to enjoy next. Thank you, Colleen, for helping enrich the lives of so many students. Best wishes.
I am so pleased to help congratulate Hank Obi on his career and upcoming retirement. Currently a second grade teacher at Van Buren Elementary, Hank has also inspired students at Nixon, Gibson, Monroe, and Jackson, both as a classroom and music teacher. He has been a member of the district faculty for 13 years and also taught in Florida. As a first music teacher at Viola Gibson Elementary School, Hank proudly composed a school song for that community. Hank also wrote music to celebrate the district's business partnerships. Those personal contributions are among his many special career memories. In retiring and moving back to Florida, Hank will also take with him reminiscences of times shared with district friends and colleagues. We'll miss having Hank in our classrooms, and I want to thank him for sharing his many gifts with students and staff. I know he'll enjoy the Florida weather, especially when the winter season arrives. Best wishes and thank you, Hank.
Herb Schaefer has spent his entire 33-year career promoting fitness as a physical education teacher in the Cedar Rapids schools. Currently at Roosevelt Middle School, he also taught at Kenwood, Franklin, and Taft. In addition to teaching, Herb enjoyed coaching positions at each school, as well as at Kennedy and Harding, and was an activities coordinator at Taft. Throughout his career, he has served as a building representative and executive board member for the Cedar Rapids Education Association. Retiring will find him missing the day-to-day contact with students and colleagues. However, it provides him with more time with his wife and daughters, as he looks forward to a new role as a grandfather down the road. Congratulations, Herb, and thank you for your service and dedication to the district. Best wishes in retirement.
It is my happy privilege to introduce Marla Straight, who will be leaving the Cedar Rapids Community School District after 38 years of teaching at Roosevelt and Harding Middle Schools and at Washington High School. Retirement was not an easy decision for Marla. Those of us fortunate enough to know and work with her knows how much she loves working with students, and judging by the number of students who hang out in her classroom, even when classes aren't in session, it's clear that students love and respect her. It's no secret that students come out of her classroom better readers and writers. They also have a special knowledge of the odd antique objects that she occasionally uses in her classroom, either as writing prompts or just to get them to think about how people accomplish things before the digital age. It's worth noting, as a self-described old-school teacher, she keeps up with today's students, engaging them both in the analog and the digital spheres of learning. Marla's grace and ability to deal with the challenges of life is truly admirable. The humor and lessons that we've all been witness to have been inspiring. We are so much better off for having had Marla as a colleague, teacher, and friend. I know she will not just fade away, she will continue to read, take cooking classes, and experience exciting places through her travels. Thank you, Marla, for your dedication to our great profession.
As a special education teacher, Vicky Archibald has had the opportunity to support numerous students and families. She joined the district 20 years ago after first working as a substitute teacher and at Grant Wood AEA. She currently serves third-grade behavior-focused students at Truman Elementary School. The challenges and rewards of working with students with behavior and learning needs have brought Vicky many and varied career highlights. She will also fondly remember the talented and dedicated colleagues that she has been privileged to work with over the years. At the conclusion of the current school year, Vicky will join her husband in retirement. She looks forward to spending more time with their three adult children and enjoying their seven grandchildren. Thank you, Vicky, for all you have done to support students and the school district. Best wishes.
I will adjourn, I didn't just decide to. There's a copy of the school board calendars, and please fill out your evaluations. And I'd like to wish each of you a great evening, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.